Our first item on the agenda is to present the pageant for Birlin High School.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched with so gallant we streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof that our flag was still there. Oh, say the stars they could bear yet to wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tyler Boyle. I'm the Choral Director here at Birlin High School. This year on Veterans Day, Birlin High School hosted an evening program to honor and recognize the veteran service men and women of our community. A portion of the presentation focused on those who served during the Tet Offensive of the Vietnam War. During the presentation, students described how the music of the time had profound impacts on soldiers and service members. A short passage from a 2018 New York Times piece by Army Combat Correspondent Doug Bradley was shared describing that impact. He writes, "Music was more than just background for us. It was our lifeline, a link to our existence back in the world, connecting us with the things that enabled us to keep on pushing. Soldiers used music to build community, stay connected to the home front, and hold on to the humanity the war was trying to take away." Birlin High School students Abby Ferland, Daniel Lammerow, Greg Waddenger, and Keddie Wanniger then performed and will share with you now one of the most popular songs of the time, "Fortunate Son" by Creedence Clearwater Revival.
They're already asking for an encore up here. To the music department, thank you very much. It's always so impressive when you perform for us. Each year, I always say to myself, wow, that was so good, there's no way it could get better. And then the next year, it's better. So congratulations to you, the students, the teams, well done. Thank you. Next on the agenda is we have our committee reports and correspondence to the board. I know that we're going to start with our student representatives because they have someplace to head out as soon as they can, so.
So today after school, actually, we had the callbacks for the musical of BHS's year is "Lay Miss," so the callbacks were today after school. And the cast list for it is coming out Wednesday.
Last week, we had the fall induction for NHS, so an additional 13 members were inducted, which all were seniors.
Fall sports now are winding down with most seasons are done, but football is still competing, and winter sports tryouts are beginning soon.
Tonight, Sage is hosting the Powderpuff Games, so at 6:00, in memory of Tyler Cott, Nick Zuck, and supporting Birlin, helping Birlin. The Powderpuff Game is being held for female student athletes to work together and raise money for local foundations.
So recently at BHS, we've noticed a lot of new clubs popping up, such as the Broad Class Broadcast Club, Chess Club, Coating Club, Coral Conservation Society, Future Teachers Club, Japanese Language and Culture Club, Philosophy Club, and World Language and Culture Club.
And lastly, this past weekend, the upbeat fall weekend was held at Camp Woodstock, and about 80 kids went, so it was a good turnout. That's all from us tonight.
All right, thank you very much. A lot going on. Any questions before our students, before I let them hit the road? I know we have practice and they want to get over to Powderpuff, so any questions? All right, guys, you are free to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple of reports for committees. Student achievement?
We met before the meeting with Erin and Eileen, and they went through the new program of studies proposals. There's a lot of exciting course changes, and I know that next meeting, Eileen is going to be coming here and explaining to the board as a whole some of the major changes that are taking place. And there's two issues to look for that I'm especially intrigued to hear even more about. One is what's a new program called the Honors Challenge that's going to exist in a lot of courses as a way of earning honors credit in some of the elective areas especially. And also, the school counseling department is going to be putting together workshops for credit, and that was part of the proposal. So it was very thoroughly researched and put forward to us, and we all agreed unanimously to put it forward and to approve the changes. And now I want the board as a whole will hear the update next week, or next month, rather.
Great, thank you, Rich. I think only ad hoc, right? Nothing from communications this week, right, Julia? Okay, so we had an ad hoc committee member meeting relative to policy earlier tonight about surrounding two policies. One has to do with our new security guards here in the schools. We did not have a policy relative to having security guards since they're new this year, so we worked with our legal team, and they've developed a policy for us. In our packets is the first reading for that. We won't have adoption until our next meeting. And then the second one revolves around actually these meetings. We changed the time from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and yes, that means we have to go in and amend our policies that they say 6 o'clock. So that's also first meeting. We do have a couple of questions or a couple of modifications that were requested to talk to our legal counsel with, but second reading will be at the next meeting. Okay? Brian, correspondence to the board?
Yes, two correspondents to the board. Dear Board of Education members, thank you for the beautiful floor arrangement and remembrance of my mother. Your kindness, expression of sympathy is truly appreciated. Paul O'Rourke and family, McGee Special Ed teacher. And the second, your kindness, expression of sympathy, and friendship will always remain in our memories. Thank you for your thoughtfulness. Thank you to you and your family. Carl and Dawn Primo, Dawn is a teacher at Griswold.
Okay. Anything else from correspondence to the board besides what Brian has referenced? Okay, hearing none, we will move along to the next item. We have, why, I'm sure everybody's here. Awards and presentations in conjunction with the American Education Week. This is one of our favorite meetings because we get to recognize so many people for what they provide to Birlin Public Schools. So without keeping it behind, I get to kick it off here, so. So before we start, this is a kind of a meeting of transition, right? So we had an election, Jamie Miller was reelected to the board, congratulations. But this is also a time where one of our board members has elected to move on and not stay with us, so it's a sad time for us at the same time because we've gotten to know each other and work together closely. So tonight, I want to recognize Jake Fisher. Jake, if you want to come on down? Jake has been a board member here for the last three years. He's always brought insightfulness, at times give us the right perspective when perhaps we're heading down the wrong path with our, what's the word that I want? Our energy towards where we want to get at the end. Sometimes he reels us back in and says, whoa, think about this, let's go all the way through. He brings us a good perspective of that. And Jake, we're going to miss you a great deal on the board, and we want to thank you for your service here to the town of Birlin and the students.
Well, thank you very much. It's a tough decision, and it's, you know, great working with all of these volunteers, not getting a lot of appreciation, but it's a great opportunity for a nonpartisan group that just wants to do good. So it's a great opportunity for someone else who wants to give back to the community. But just before I go, I just want to say one thing. One of the things... One of the things that we've talked about a lot is trying to how to get more people into the meetings. Well, I mean, this is, it'd be great if every meeting was filled like this, but the answer is right here, opening act. Start every meeting. Who would show up if those guys were playing every meeting? Show of hands. They were amazing. Anyway, thanks, I'll go.
I'll call up Brian Benigni to do the remainder of the awards.
Well, thank you very much for being here this evening. I'd like to start off tonight by recognizing some students. The, excuse me a second. I'd like to ask, let me just read a little bit about the award here, I apologize. I'm going to ask the principal to come up and recognize the students from each school, but first, let me share with you a little about the award. This is a award given by the superintendents. It's called CAPS, the Association of Public School Superintendents, and it's a certificate of excellence. Students are selected for this prestigious annual award based upon criteria such as demonstrated leadership, school, community, community service, service to others, academic prowess relative to ability. So it's not an award that just is for the top academic students, it's a student that's balanced across the board, and it's selected from staff and administration at each level. So I'd like to first ask the principal from Griswold School, David Kitzman, to come forward.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Benigni, families, guests, thank you everyone for coming tonight. Excuse me. This is a really fun evening and opportunity to recognize a lot of special people, and I'm very proud to recognize two students from Griswold School tonight, Owen Holland and Michelle Liu. I'd like to start with Owen. Owen, if you want to come on down? Owen is a grade five student in Ms. Spinella's classroom and a proud Griswold Eagle. He exemplifies the characteristics of a CAPS recipient through his leadership, decision-making, academic ability, and compassion towards others. Or as his teacher, Ms. Spinella, describes him, "A problem solver who shows great persistence." Owen is joined here tonight by his parents, his two older brothers, and his grandmother, and I'm sure that talking about Owen brings them just as much pride as it brings us. Owen's favorite subjects in school are math and reading, which will serve him well as he pursues his dream job of designing roads as a civil engineer. He possesses strong communication skills and collaborates well with others, so I look forward to you achieving this goal and helping us fix the I-84 little fiasco we have. At school and at home, he stays extremely busy. He is a member of the Griswold School Community Leaders, a third-grade reading buddy, and he participates in band, afternoon adventures, and noontime sports. Outside of school, Owen plays soccer on the Berlin Travel Team, plays football, and practices his saxophone. At Griswold School, we talk a lot about being kind, responsible, safe, and making things better. And Owen, you model these expectations for your peers each and every day, and we're all extremely proud of you. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to introduce Michelle Liu. Michelle, come on down. Michelle is another well-deserved recipient of the CAPS Award. She is joined here tonight by her parents, her brother Evan, and her sister Melina. I think they're back there. Yes, they are. She's a member of Ms. Bodette's classroom where she excels, she tries her best, encourages others, and is always ready to assist a classmate. She's a talented artist who recently designed a poster for our Veterans Day Assembly, which we decided to blow up with our poster maker and display for future Veterans Day Assemblies. She's also a skilled mathematician. Both of these interests will serve her well as in life as she decides between being a doctor or an artist. Outside of school, Michelle stays very busy. She attends Chinese school on the weekend where she is learning Mandarin and participating in the Math Olympiad. In school, she plays the flute, sings for the choristers and chorus, is a member of the Community Leaders, and enjoys additional opportunities for art with Ms. Lee. I asked Michelle what she would tell a new student if tomorrow was their first day at Griswold School, and she said, "I'd tell them how nice the teachers are and how great the friends are that they will meet. I would also tell them about all the fun activities like SOAR's assemblies, Music in the Round, Olympic Day, Community Leaders, and the fifth-grade party." As you can tell by her response, Michelle is an active member of our community. Michelle, you are a kind and compassionate student who makes Griswold School a better place. Thank you very much.
Next, if I could ask, will the principal, Megan Streis, to come forward?
For this award, I'd like to call up Joshua Alquist first. Josh is a fifth-grade student in Mrs. Tarver's class. She described him as a true leader in and out of the classroom and a kind individual who comes to school each day with a positive attitude, ready to learn. Josh is organized, focused, and always looking for ways to grow as an individual. He possesses a growth mindset in all areas and finds ways to make connections and apply new learning. Josh plays the trumpet in the Willard School fifth-grade band and the Afternoon Adventures Jazz Band. He is always seeking out new and challenging music and persists through difficult pieces until they are perfected. Josh is a true friend to his peers, always including them and being a good partner who never hesitates to help them out in times of need. To learn more about Josh, I asked him what he would like to be when he gets older. He replied that he would like to be a doctor so he can help people who don't feel well. He made it very clear that he does not want to do surgery. Next, I asked him who inspires him. My Aunt Renee inspires me because she likes to do a lot of crafty things, and so do I. She likes to go to church, and so do I, and I'm excited to go to church because it has a band that plays inspirational music and you sing and dance. He concluded by saying that most importantly, she has taught me that you can find your own way to do things, you don't always have to follow others. Congratulations to Josh Alquist, we're so proud of you. Next, I'd like to call Julia Solik up. Julia is a fifth-grade student in Ms. Pesavento's class. She described Julia as a leader in every sense of the word. She is a role model to her fellow students, always meeting expectations of her. Julia loves to challenge herself and help others persevere. She consistently strives for success and accuracy and puts great effort into everything she does. She has been participating in an enrichment project in math, far surpassing the expectations of fifth-grade standards. Julia is a talented musician, playing trumpet in the band. She consistently works to improve by challenging herself to learn difficult music and teams up with classmates to practice. Julia is kind-hearted. She is a person who would do anything to help someone and is often found helping classmates when they are in need of assistance. Julia always reaches out to students who may be alone or in need of a friend. Her classmates nominated her for Student Council, where she gives up recess time to help plan fundraisers and events for the school. I asked Julia what she wants to be when she grows up. She replied she wants to be an accountant because she really likes adding numbers and solving really challenging problems. She went on to say that it feels really good when she's able to solve them. When I asked her who inspires her, she first acknowledged her teachers at Willard School, saying that they have taught her so much and always help her when she is confused. Then she said her mom and dad really inspire her because they help her a lot. Dad is good at math. When I'm stuck, he just says one word and I can figure the problem out. She went on to say, last year, mom helped her with her reading responses when she was not sure what to write about the book. Julia said that she'd like to thank her mom and dad for helping her with everything and for all that they do to her. Congratulations, Julia Solik, we are so very proud of you.
Next, if I could have Principal Hubbard School, Al Sousa, to come forward?
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to all of our award recipients tonight. Very, very well deserved. I'd like to welcome friends, families, honored guests. Hubbard School is proud to present two students for our CAPS Award. Our first award recipient is Mr. Landon Sassu-Martin. Come right up, Landon. Landon is an active member of Ms. Broshue's grade five class, and he's been at Hubbard School since fourth grade. Landon is described by staff as an exceptional student. He is the hallmark of hard work and persistence, always conscientious of his work, and paying close attention to detail. Landon is not only a bright, determined student, but a supremely kind-hearted individual who never forgets the power of please and thank you. Each day, enters the class with a smile and a cheerful good morning. Although Landon has been at Hubbard for a relatively short period of time, he has made a significant impression on staff and peers. In a world that can be muddled and complicated by the literal and figurative noise and volume of life, Landon's quiet kindness is simply thunderous. He is committed to his group members when collaborating on team projects and demonstrates a measure of empathy and core value that has and will continue to make a difference in the world around him. In speaking with Landon, I learned that he wants to be an author or a pastry chef one day. He enjoys writing and telling stories as well as cooking together with his grandmother. In his spare time, he loves to play video games, and his happiest one at home with his family, playing and spending time with them. Landon's favorite subject is math, as he finds it both fun and easy-ish. He has no tolerance for exclusion or when anyone is made to feel left out. As a CAPS Award recipient, I asked Landon if he had any advice for me as the principal of Hubbard. He responded, "You're doing a good job, so keep doing what you're doing to make the school a good place to be." I also asked him if he had any advice for his peers. Landon stated, "Always be yourself." In closing, Landon wanted to let his parents know the following. "Thank you for being so nice, so caring, and so loving." Congratulations, Landon, on such a well-deserved honor. Our next award recipient this evening is Ms. Monica Burbala. Monica is a contributing member of Mrs. Serena's grade five class, and she has attended Hubbard School since kindergarten. Monica is described by staff as a friendly, joyful learner who consistently demonstrates role-model behavior. She is a hard worker who collaborates with partners and displays strong organizational skills. Monica readily employs the range of strategies and skills available to her across academic and social-emotional arenas. She is an independent thinker who is eager to be challenged. Monica is a kind, empathetic class citizen who is always a wonderful friend to her classmates. Her compassionate, mindful disposition is an asset to the classroom and school community. You can always count on Monica to make every effort to put forth her best self in any circumstance. She's a wonderful student and a superb person who makes those around her better. In speaking with Monica, I learned that she would like to be a doctor. She really wants to help people who are sick and help people feel better, not to mention they make a lot of money. Monica enjoys riding her bike and playing with her sister in her spare time. Her favorite subject is math because it is kind of easy and math games are really fun. She is happiest when laughing with friends and family. Monica shared she has no tolerance for rude people who just try to annoy others. As a CAPS Award recipient, I asked Monica if she had any advice for me as the principal of Hubbard. She responded, "Keep doing the stuff you're doing because it's the right stuff." I also asked Monica if she had any advice for her peers. She responded, "Be a role model. Don't worry so much about trying to make people laugh by doing the wrong thing, just do the right thing." In closing, Monica wanted to tell her parents, "Thank you for helping me with everything I have needed help with along the way." Congratulations, Monica, for such a well-deserved honor.
Next, if I could have Principal McGee Middle School, Salerso, come forward?
On behalf of the staff at McGee School, I'm proud to recognize eighth graders Aliana Wisick and Elijah Burgos, I'm sorry, as students who are deserving of tonight's certificate. Let's call on Aliana first. Aliana enjoys learning as her favorite subjects are math, science, and Spanish. She has a strong aptitude and interest in the arts and athletics as she's a member of the track team, the drama club, and plays flute and piccolo in the band. In addition, she takes daily lessons at Dance Step, plug, and is committed to dance performance. What stands out the most about Aliana is that she's the kind of person who enjoys being around her peers. She told me that she enjoys coming to school as it's a way to interact with kids her age. As a result, she roots for them and will do anything to help them succeed. Not only does Aliana like to be around her peers, her peers like to be around her, and she's learned from her mom and dad to treat others like you would like to be treated, which is why she always asks people in her company how she can be helpful to them. By the way, both mom and dad were born in Poland and taught Aliana how to speak Polish language, so I don't know where they are. Where's mom and dad? Polish speakers? As a people person, she also loved serving as a buddy to help primary-age students at Willard School to improve literacy and numeracy skills. She also loves her four-year-old brother, Kayden, and one-year-old sister, Callie. When you combine her passion for learning, people, and exemplary effort in grades, you have one of our deserving Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents Award winners in Aliana Wisick. Congratulations, Aliana. I'd like to call on Elijah Burgos. Elijah is no stranger to recognition, as his teachers describe him as conscientious, consistently prepared, and a tireless worker who is a pleasure to have in class. Although Elijah likes all of his academic subjects at school, his favorites are math and science. He really enjoys the science experiments and wants to continue studying until he becomes a surgeon someday. Interest in the medical field seems to run in the family, as his mom is a nurse in the New Britain Public School system, and one of his older brothers, Joel, is a physician's assistant. Elijah runs every day to stay in shape and was a member of the McGee Cross Country Team. He's also a very good trumpet player, like his Berlin High senior brother, Nathan. He served as a positive role model for a long time, and he was also talking to first graders as far back as his days in second grade at Willard School. On behalf of his favorite teachers, Mr. Bopray and Mrs. Rogers, who's getting recognized tonight, we are proud and we would like to congratulate Elijah. Congratulations, Elijah.
If I could ask Eileen Eustace, Principal Berlin High School, to come forward?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I am very honored to recognize two of our amazing Berlin High School students this evening. So first, I'd like to ask Monica Patacula to come down. Monica is an enthusiastic, articulate, ambitious, and intelligent young woman who is consistently pushing herself to be better. Monica has excelled in a rigorous academic program during her high school career. Through her academics, Monica has found herself being recognized with the National Academy of Future Scientists and Technologists Award of Excellence, the National Youth Leadership Forum in Medicine, and induction into the National Honor Society. Monica has a strong passion towards becoming a biomedical engineer. She appreciates how engineers can take an idea from someone's imagination and transform it to become a reality. Monica also enjoys how biomedical engineering is continuing to develop, and she is able to delve into the unknown through cutting-edge technology. Specifically, Monica would like to work with prosthetic limbs. In addition to being an outstanding student, Monica is also a leader in her extracurricular activities. Monica was elected as vice president of the Unity Club, producer of the Unified Theater Club, vice president of the RO Kappa National Social Studies Honor Society, and is an active member of the Polish Scouting and Guiding Association, where for the past three years, she has held a role as leader of the New Britain Division. Monica works as an administrative assistant at Liberty Home Care Options- at Liberty Home Care Options, and during the spring, you can find Monica on the field as an athlete on the Berlin High School Lacrosse Team, a sport she truly enjoys participating in. Congratulations, Monica. You are a wonderful role model for your classmates. Next, I'd like to ask Adam Kaiser to come down. Adam is a methodical and self-disciplined young man who works hard on his own and in helping others. He stands out for his great personality and demeanor. He is well-respected by both his peers and teachers. Over the past three years, Adam has shown just how much he truly enjoys learning. Beyond his heavy workload at school, he is self-taught in AP Macroeconomics and Microeconomics, classes we do not offer. He also spent years going to Polish school to perfect his speaking and understanding of the language. This commitment solidifies the dedication Adam shows to learning. Adam learned very early to advocate for his educational needs as he would frequently provide communication with those in his schools. This independence served as a foundation for Adam's personal sense of drive and appreciation for academics and ultimately accounting for Adam's 100.16 GPA and a perfect score of 800 on the math section of the SAT. An impressive accomplishment. No, I'm not going. Adam has been a leader in many capacities across disciplines. He can manage and facilitate tasks at work as a lifeguard and pool attendant supervisor. He utilizes these characteristics when being a leader for school groups as well, wanting from others only what he would jump in and do himself. He holds himself and others accountable for the success of the groups he is in and in charge of. Being the treasurer of Berlin High's Chapter of the National Honor Society and a club he co-founded and is the treasurer of entitled Ethics and Applications of Science, has gained him the respect of his peers and others. In addition, Adam helps guide the younger members of the swimming and diving team, helping them remain a cohesive group. Further, he is able to coordinate 20 members that are members, 20 students that are members of our Community and Outreach Service Program upbeat, so the community service they are providing to the town gets done in a timely, efficient manner, something he takes pride in. Adam will move on to higher education institution, bringing with him his love of learning, his independence, and his drive to assist others. Congratulations, Adam.
Next, I have the privilege of recognizing Teachers of the Year. In Berlin, each year, we have a Teacher of the Year Committee that's made up of former teachers of the year, administration, and we go through a nominating process. And we select a teacher of the year at each building. And then from the Teachers of the Year, we select a teacher to represent Berlin Public Schools, which is on December 4th at the Bushnell with other teachers of the year around the state. And that individual competes for the state teacher of the year. So without further ado, I'd like to recognize each school teacher of the year with a little bit of background. First, I'd like to recognize Erica Tardif and ask her to come down from Mary Griswold School. Erica? Erica has been a teacher for 14 years and has served for four years as an elementary teacher at Griswold. She previously taught kindergarten and 3rd grade in New Hampshire. Erica has a strong commitment to professional learning, becoming a Google-certified educator, and participating in trainings, responsive classroom, and Linda Mood Bell visualizing and verbalizing. She currently serves on the Mathematics Vertical Team, the Social Studies Committee, and was a team leader for the 2018-19 school year, as well as being the 4th grade's math studio teacher, opening her classroom for teachers across the district to learn as she modeled new teaching strategies. In her philosophy of education, Erica states, "When students are comfortable in their classroom and can take ownership of the space, it is then that learning can take place. The best teachers are the ones who are always improving their craft, learning from their colleagues, and spending time laughing with their students." Erica is a tremendous asset to our district. Congratulations, Erica. Next, I'd like to recognize Shelby Ryan from Richard D. Hubbard School. Shelby? Shelby is beginning her seventh year teaching in Berlin. Shelby seeks out professional learning opportunities, including responsive classroom training, team training, CMEA conferences, smart music webinars, and oriflal workshops. She has served on multiple district and state committees, including K-12 Music Vertical Team, the Berlin Stipend Committee, CMA Honors Band, choir participation. Shelby's colleagues at Hubbard value the way she exhibits enthusiasm and provides excitement to each children's music experience. When interviewed, one of her young students said, "Music is in my heart." In her philosophy of education, Shelby states, "Through music, I teach children to be kind, compassionate people who want to better themselves as well as grow musically. I find the biggest rewards in teaching come from the small moments in the course of a day where I see a student light up with excitement and joy in accomplishing a skill they've been trying to master." Shelby, thank you for helping our students light up with joy. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to recognize Barbara Therial at Hart Willard School. Representing Willard School is Barbara Therial, a 24-year veteran of the Berlin Public Schools. Barbara has served as Student Council Advisor, Team Mentor, Nature's Classroom Chaperone, Athlete Adventure Teacher. She has served on the District Mathematics Vertical Team, Literacy Vertical Team, Social Committee. Barbara's colleagues value the time and energy she puts into supporting both Willard and Berlin communities, organizing food drives, making Valentine's Day cards for seniors, and raising funds for the Friends of Berlin Animal Shelter. In her philosophy of education, Barbara states, "I believe that there are no limits to what kids can do, and if they're given direction and guidance that challenges them to think independently and push beyond their limits. Education is a unique profession that shapes children's lives. I feel very fortunate to be a teacher. We are indeed fortunate to have Barbara as a teacher here in Berlin for 24 years." Thank you, Barbara. Next, I'd like to invite Abby Rogers from McGee Middle School down. Abby is a career Berlin educator with 14 years of service in the district as an exploratory Spanish teacher for Grade Six and Seven, and her current role as a Grade Eight Spanish teacher. Abby's colleagues and students comment on her warmth and her positive, supportive personality. Abby describes McGee as her family. When interviewed, one of her students said, "She's like my school mom." In her philosophy of education, Abby states, "My students need to know that teachers believe in them and will push them to their limits, but also be there if they stumble along the way. My students need to know that it's important to take risks and it's okay to look silly at times. And it's exactly what I do in my classroom. I create an environment where students know they're safe and they feel comfortable enough to take risks and look silly at times, because in life, that's all part of the learning process." Abby, thank you for being a ray of sunshine at McGee. Congratulations. I am pleased to announce that Adam Leonard, Teacher of Science at Berlin High School, has been selected as our 2020 Teacher of the Year. Please welcome Adam. Adam has spent 15 years in his teaching career in the Berlin Public Schools. In addition to his teaching, he has served as Evening High School Coordinator and Director of Adult Education. He earned his Bachelor's Degree in Sports Medicine at Sacred Heart University and a Master's Degree from CW Post University in Earth Science Education. He also obtained a six-year certificate in Educational Leadership from Southern Connecticut State University. Among the courses Adam has taught at Berlin High School are Integrated Earth Science, Physical Science, Earth and Space Science, Astronomy I, Astronomy II, and Busting Myths in Science. Adam has been an active role shaping the science curriculum at BHS, conceptualizing and proposing several of the courses that he is teaching, as well as courses in meteorology and catastrophic events. Adam has a long history of providing science to the Berlin community by serving on a number of committees. He served co-chair of the Steering Committee for the Lincoln Association of Schools and Colleges, NIAS, to BHS, a role that took many hours of dedication, work coordinating the work, and multiple committees in organizing the details for the October 2019 visit. He has served as the Science Vertical Team since its inception in 2005. Additional commits include Berlin Learner Outcomes Team, the Honors Challenge Committee, and the Student Feedback Committee. Dedicated to his continued growth as an educator, Adam was honored to be selected by Discovery Education as one of five teachers in the United States to go on a trip to South Africa to promote technology integration. The past spring, he participated with a cohort of his BHS peers in the Modern Learners Course: Reimagining Assessment. As an example of his pedagogy, Adam instituted the practice of reverse report cards to give his students the opportunity to grade him. He seeks out their opinions about what is working and what is not working in his classroom. He solicits their feedback to make his teaching even better. His teaching oath is posted on the door of his classroom. Among other ideas, the document states, "As your teacher, I promise to be open to hear your ideas about how I can improve my class and to show my excitement for the material." One student commented, "He actually cares about what he is teaching and how he is teaching it." It's fun to be in his class. Adam will be recognized at State Recognition Ceremony on December 4th. Please join me in congratulating Adam as our 2020 Teacher of the Year for the Berlin Public Schools. Congratulations, Adam. As you can see, we have some very special teachers here. Next, I'd like to recognize our 2020 Paraprofessional of the Year. If I could ask Donna Van Damme to come to the podium. Donna has been a paraprofessional in Berlin for the past 14 years. Her endless dedication to her students makes an impact each and every day. Donna makes every student feel accepted and special. She has a wonderful rapport with her students and works hard to guide and instruct them. She is kind, passionate, and empathetic. She makes sure all of her students know they can be successful and are important. She goes out of her way each day to make sure all of her students are succeeding and feel accomplished. Thank you, Donna. Congratulations. If I could have our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Erin McGurk, come forward.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very pleased to be here tonight to recognize support staff who have been selected by the individual schools and by Central Office for Recognition this year. I'd like to start with Jody Kanowski from Griswold School. Mrs. Kanowski's tenure in the Berlin Public Schools began at Berlin High School in 2006, working in what is now called the STEP Program. In 2008, she moved on to Griswold School as a one-to-one paraprofessional. The very next year, she followed that same student to middle school and spent one year at McGee. In 2010, she returned to Griswold School until her services were needed at Willard in the New Blast Program. While at Willard School, she began working with Mrs. McFarlane in the SNAP Program for students needing alternative programming. The SNAP Program moved to Griswold School in 2015 and remains there today. In addition to all of these moves, Mrs. Kanowski also worked at Hubbard for summer school, completing the Berlin Public Schools pentafecta. Mrs. Kay is an outstanding paraprofessional for many reasons, including her patience, understanding of individual student needs, consistency, and her ability to reflect and grow. She's an integral part of our program and school, providing one-to-one support for some of our most needy students. We love her passion, compassion, and professionalism. When I think about Mrs. Kanowski, I'm reminded of a quote by Dr. James Comer, which says, "No significant learning occurs without a significant relationship." Mrs. Kay builds strong relationships with students based on love, caring, and respect. Thank you, Jody, for making Griswold School a special place. Next, we have Ruth Bolinski from Hubbard School. Ruth has served the students and staff of Hubbard School since 2013. She started in the capacity of a research paraprofessional, moved to the role of office-duty paraprofessional, and ultimately garnered the position of Special Education Paraprofessional, where she has been ever since. Bringing 30 years of experience in the special needs field to her profession, Mrs. Bolinski has worked with a full range of the Hubbard student population, spanning from kindergarten to Grade Five. Ruth brings a balanced disposition, positive mindset, and flexible attitude to all she encounters. Her calm, supportive approach allows her to meet students exactly where they are and propel them forward to success. Mrs. Bolinski exhibits a steadfast commitment to providing what's best for student development and learning. She knows her learners and can be counted on to perform her responsibilities with consistency, care, and purpose. Ruth is a valued member of the Hubbard family, and we are more than fortunate to have her as a part of our school community. Thank you, Mrs. Bolinski, for ongoing service and support you continue to provide for the students, staff, and families of Hubbard School. Congratulations. Next, we have Lynn Cantafi from Willard School. Lynn has been a paraprofessional in the Special Education Program at Willard for the past 15 years. She consistently demonstrates a high level of professionalism and brings her best to the job every day. Lynn approaches each aspect of her job with a positive attitude and a determination to succeed. She makes it a priority to connect with each and every student on a personal level and makes them feel valued and important. Lynn is extremely flexible and is able to provide structural and emotional support to the students she works with. While working in classrooms, she is able to quickly assess situations and provide her colleagues with valuable insights to keep everyone moving forward. She consistently seeks feedback to support students and achieve optimum student outcomes. When asked about Lynn, a colleague said, "Lynn's positive attitude, sense of humor, and dedication to students makes her a valuable member of the Willard community and a pleasure to be around." Lynn Cantafi is an asset to Willard School. We are so proud of her and appreciate her numerous contributions to support our students and staff. Next, we have Tyler Savage from McGee Middle School. Tyler Savage serves McGee and Hubbard Schools. Sorry. It says the Loan Information Technology Specialist, but I thought it was gonna say Lone Ranger, so I stumbled all the moment. As the Loaned Information Technology Specialist for each respective school, he is an essential employee who is often observed walking briskly through the halls armed with a radio, laptop, and a bag that must be full of magic tools because he never leaves a problem unsolved. There is like a Lone Ranger superhero quality here. Tyler is not only efficient in his work as he works politely with students and staff to fix problems with projectors, computers, printers, interactive whiteboards, and connectivity issues. He is also friendly, personable, and has a great sense of humor. Tyler fits right into the mix of a middle school setting. He has made a big difference in the culture, community, and smooth operation of hardware and software to support teaching and learning at McGee. This recognition is very well deserved. Thank you, Tyler. Now, we have Nancy Kenyer from Berlin High School. Nancy has been an invaluable member of the Science Department and the Berlin High School community for the past six years. As the Science Lab Technician, she assists teachers in the development, setup, and implementation of labs, maintains the online chemical of labs, maintains the online chemical inventory, prepares chemicals and supplies for labs in all disciplines, and conducts lab makeups after school with students. The Science Department's ability to execute NGSS is made possible by the way that Nancy sources, organizes, and prepares an ever-growing list of materials that are used to generate student questions and answers. Additionally, Nancy is instrumental in safety practices for the Science Department. She tests and maintains safety equipment, including the eye wash stations, assists with the fume hazardous materials, and coordinates the cleaning and sanitizing of lab equipment. Her presence during labs allows students to conduct all labs in a safe manner. Without Nancy, the Science Department would not be able to conduct as many authentic learning experiences with students. Nancy is the parent of four Berlin High School graduates and can often be seen at a variety of events, from games to performances. We are elated that Nancy was deservingly selected as BHS Staff Person of the Year. Next, I have Amy Brace from the Board of Education Central Office. Mrs. Brace began working in Berlin as the Administrative Assistant for the Assistant Superintendent in 2011. Through Mrs. Brace's tenure, five years in this position, she was exceptional in all aspects of the job. Unfortunately for Brian, she decided in 2017 to resign for her position to be able to spend additional time raising her two children, Tim and Elena. For the next two years, Amy filled in for us in various capacities at the Board of Education to provide temporary support and coordination for transportation, registration, and human resource coordination for the short term. Amy was recently rehired as a part-time office assistant, providing HR support in addition to registration, certification, and front office coverage. Everyone at the Board of Ed Office is delighted to have Mrs. Brace back on staff. Throughout her employment, she has met all challenges with a positive can-do attitude. Berlin is so fortunate to employ Amy Brace. She is always willing to go above and beyond to assist any member of the public or the staff with whatever they need. We all enjoy her sense of humor and her mischievous grin. Amy consistently demonstrates a caring, positive attitude, which is supported with a genuine concern for others. Thank you for everything you do daily, and congratulations. Very well deserved.
Thank you, Erin. So the last set of awards we have this evening are called the Friends of Berlin. And those people that may not work for the Berlin Public Schools, but as it takes a community in any school district, it's often those people in the community that do little extras that make us such a great town and a great school district. So I'd like to recognize a few of those individuals this evening. First, I'd like to ask Imelda Manzolo from Griswold School to come forward. Imelda?
Mrs. Manzolo has been part of the Griswold School community for 11 years, serving in several capacities, including Room Parent, Classroom and Building Volunteer, Parents Club Treasurer, Parents Club President. Her passion for Griswold School is limitless. She is continuously looking at ways to increase community support, engage students in meaningful learning, and raise money so that children can have a better experience at school. She balances raising two boys, working full-time, including a great deal of travel, and serving as current president of the Parents Club. You'd have to ask her which is most challenging, but she accomplishes it all with dignity and grace. Thank you so much, Imelda. Very appreciated. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to ask Danielle Morsi Corsetti to come forward from Hubbard School.
Dani has been a valuable contributing member of our school community throughout her children's education at Hubbard. Ms. Morsi Corsetti has three children who have attended our school, Lucy, Tommy, and Leo. Dani is the living, breathing example of terms such as parent partnership and friend of Berlin schools. She has selfishly volunteered her time and talents donating countless hours in the roles of PTO President, Hospitality Chair, Membership Chair. Ms. Morsi Corsetti is also a member of the Berlin Parents Advisory Council and the Berlin Education Council. Dani is a familiar face within the school community, serving as a classroom volunteer and field trip chaperone. She has attended and helped organize numerous school fundraisers throughout her time at Hubbard. She has enriched the educational experience of her students at Hubbard with an ongoing commitment to their collective and individual success. Her collaborative leadership, unflappable dedication, and unyielding effort have benefited the Hubbard School community immeasurably. Thank you, Dani, for all you do and all you have done for the students, staff, and families of Hubbard. Congratulations on a well-deserved honor.
Next, I'd like to ask Maria Carmenati, Willard School, to come forward.
Ms. Carmenati has volunteered time and talents at Willard School for more than seven years, since her daughter was in kindergarten. Whether it be concerts, field trips, assisting in the classroom, or in the library, wherever there is a Willard cause, Ms. Carmenati is always there. Last year, when her son, Gianni, was in second grade, she volunteered during the reading block to provide students additional opportunities to strengthen their skills and practice, reading to an adult. Each year, in addition to volunteering in our children's classrooms, she continued to volunteer in the kindergarten classroom and in the library. To this day, even though her daughter is in sixth grade and her son is in third grade, she continues to volunteer in the kindergarten classroom. She started volunteering six years ago. Ms. Carmenati is kind, flexible, and great with children. She is considered indispensable in the Willard School library. She volunteers there twice a week. During these times, she checks books in, gets them shelved, and always takes initiative to find other things she can do to help out. One staff member said, "Maria is a true pleasure to work with and a real asset to Willard School. We are proud to have her in our Willard family. We cannot think of anyone more deserving of this award. We cannot agree more." Congratulations, Maria.
Next, I'd like to ask Beverly Manzi from McGee Middle School to come forward, please.
When I started in Berlin 27 years ago, Beverly, I'm not going to date us both now, Beverly, but Beverly was assistant at McGee, so I worked very closely with Beverly the years. But I'll read off the script here, so I won't digress too much. Beverly has been an immeasurable amount of love for her family, the town of Berlin, and the McGee Middle School. From her days as a secretary in the McGee office, she worked tirelessly to build trust and relationships with the staff and students. Beverly would not only get the job done, but she would work with pride, compassion, and gave her full attention to every detail. Beverly has a passion for the arts, and through the Joseph Manzi Foundation, she and her foundation members have been extremely generous. For example, they have donated instruments to the school district, helped fund a modern piano lab at McGee Middle School, and supported the summer music program for the Berlin students in grades five through 12. The Berlin community is thankful to receive Beverly's friendship and commitment. The giving of her time, resources, and talents has touched the lives of countless students. Thank you, Beverly, for everything. We all appreciate all you do. Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to ask Shiel Patel to come forward from Berlin High School.
Shiel Patel has been invaluable to Berlin High School through her involvement with the Berlin Upbeat Program. Shiel has been involved with Berlin Upbeat since she was in high school. Today, she functions as a much-needed community support for the program and the students. Shiel attends all peer leader meetings, where she is a mentor for the McGee House. She also has been a resource to the Hospital for Special Care students, motivating students to get involved. Shiel assists in running the bi-weekly McGee drop-ins, where she works with high school students to plan and organize Friday night drop-ins for middle school students, so they can have a safe and enjoyable way to socialize with their peers. In addition, Shiel is an active member in the adult organization, the Upbeat Community Team, where she volunteers at many events throughout the year, such as Berlin Fair, Christmas tree sales, pancake breakfast, and upbeat picnic. She has been a huge support to the students and Mr. Rudy as they continue to build the Upbeat Program. Mr. Rudy considers Shiel to be his Ma Crow? Did I say it right? Ma Crow? Ma Crow. And if you know who Mrs. Crow is, I understand where it comes from now, okay? Mrs. Crow was involved with the Berlin Upbeat Program, if you don't know, for many years. And to have that recognition, Shiel, is a big deal. As she has displayed unwavering support for the Berlin Public High School and the Berlin Public Upbeat, we congratulate you, Shiel, and we thank you for all that you do for Berlin Upbeat and our youth. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Before I conclude the awards and we take, I'll let our Board Chair, Matt Tenza, conclude for us this evening, but I'd like to ask all of the teachers that are here to stand up to be recognized that are here this evening. So please stand up and give a round of applause. There's a multitude of teachers in the audience. Can you please stand up? Thank you for being here. And thank you for all that you do for us. So after listening to the accomplishments and activities of the students, staff, volunteers, I have to say, I feel kind of inadequate. Like, wow. I don't know how you do all that you do, but thank you very much for what you do. We now are going to take a brief recess, out front, or some refreshments, and then 15 minutes, and then we'll come back to our meeting. So, thank you, everybody. So, thank you, everybody. I see our meeting is now appropriately attended to what we're used to? The election of office should be conducted in accordance with statute 10-218, copy and closed. Election shall be an open session. Board of Education past practice has been that the election be carried out using signed ballots. Also, according to the policy 9050, copy and closed, officers shall be elected from the board by majority vote of those board members present and voting. Are there any nominations for president?
I nominate Rich.
Have a second? Who was the second by?
Julie.
Seconded by Tracy. Any other nominations? Okay, then a purple slip, I believe. Cast your ballots and pass them. Fold them and pass them towards me. I have eight ballots for Rich Arroyo. Rich? Congratulations to the new president. So at that point, I hand it over to Rich, right? And then I'm done, huh? It's coming. It's coming, Rich.
It's coming, Rich.
Thank you. Thank you. Does that mean you get... Matt, you get to keep your gavel as you go into retirement?
I do.
Wow, I see that working around my house.
I hit myself over the head with it every day.
I'm pretty sure my kids won't listen to it anymore.
All right. I gotta do it once? There you go. That'll be it. There we are. So this is me now? I have to run the next part? Oh, okay. Sorry. We have a... We have to now... Do we have any nominations for the position of secretary?
I will nominate Julia Dennis.
Second.
Are they entered in the nominations? No. Did they go to him or me? Okay.
Mr. President, I have eight ballots for Julia Dennis for secretary.
Congratulations, Julia. Guess the first lesson is don't clap near the microphone. Nothing clears out a room like an election, evidently. So thank you for the three people that are still sitting with us. Just briefly, very, very briefly, because I know we've been here for a while and it's kind of a longish agenda. I think when we vote for people, generally in town, we vote for signs, we vote for names. But nobody really gets to know the people, other than these eight... There were seven other people now up here, including Brian, so eight people up here, in terms of knowing who they are. So just a brief 20 seconds about me. I'm a career educator. I've been employed by the Southington Public Schools for 34 years. The first 29 were a middle school and high school teacher, social studies teacher. And the last five, I've been an assistant principal at Southington High School. So I'm very excited about this opportunity. My kids all went... My three kids have all graduated from the Berlin Public Schools. I've lived in town for 22 years now, I believe. Very excited for this opportunity to join the leadership team and to work closely with Brian, and to work with these fellow board members. And I'm very honored for the confidence that they've shown in me as well. I appreciate that. We have a lot of leadership experience up here at this table, and I'm sure I'm going to rely on that quite a bit, whether it's Adam or Tim or Carrie or Matt. And I want to extend a special thank you to Carrie and Matt for the last several years of outstanding leadership and service to town. You guys have done an excellent job of leading this, and I hope that I can somehow extend that path even a little bit longer. Matt, you've been the face and the voice of Berlin Public Schools for, is it three, four years? Four years? Three years. Outstanding job, and thank you for your service. Thank you very much. All right. First up on the agenda, we have the annual schedule of regular meetings. Do I have a motion? So move by Adam, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? All right, hearing no discussion. Let's have a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Eight, nothing, Carrie's. Oh, yeah. Are you... Did you give up your pen?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
All right. Sorry about that. Okay. Next up, we have several motions for consideration. Does anybody want to?
I'll move that Jeffrey Cugnobby designated treasurer of the Berlin High School Enterprise Fund, the Berlin Public Schools Activity Fund, and the Cafeteria Fund.
I think Carrie got you on the second. Can we just do all four of these, or do we have to do them all separately? All right, each one separately. Any discussion on the first motion? Nope, hearing one, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it.
I'll move that Ashley Dorsey Batista Doreen Guy be designated assistant treasurer of the Cafeteria Fund.
Second.
Adam moves, and Tim seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. One more? No, two more, actually. Keep going.
Move that each principal and the assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction be designated assistant treasurers of the Berlin Public Schools Activity Fund.
Second.
Adam seconds it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And the last one.
I move that Eileen Eustace, Barbara Ventura, Kelly Mayo, and Denise Parsons be appointed assistant treasurers of the Berlin High School Enterprise Fund.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All four motions pass. Next up, we have the appointment of the board legal counsel for 2019-2020.
Move that the law firm of Shipman &amp; Goodwin of Hartford be appointed to continue as the Board of Education Counsel for the 2019-2020 year, and that they should be so informed.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
And I believe this, to be true, it's still just an hourly rate. They don't have any flat fees, no minimums on any basis, just hourly?
Hourly.
Okay. Does that read thing the same as it was in the previous?
They did not give us a rate increase for this year, as of yet.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. And now we're in our audience of citizens. Would the three of you... Anybody like to say anything before we move on? No? Yes? Yes, absolutely. That's not a problem. Correct. So when we get to new business, the Berlin High School renovation project will move up right after, A, facilities related. So Jeff will just talk to both of those items at the same time. No problem. Any other comments? All right. Move to the consent agenda, please. Do I have any motions?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Matt, seconded by Carrie. Any conversation, any discussion, any questions on any of the five items on there?
I do. I just have a question since Mr. Ray. How many kids do you have going so far in your...
Apparently, we have 20 students.
How many staff is that that we're building?
Uh, the three staff that we'll have.
And you already have those picked up?
Yeah.
Any other conversations, any questions? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor of... All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. And there goes two of the three people left. And we're about to lose one more very shortly, I have a feeling. We can just circle, we can just circle our chairs up and have a little conversation for the rest of it. All right, so we move to new business. We're going to start off with the Director of Business Operations, Jeffrey Cugno. We'll talk about facilities-related updates and also will address the Berlin High School renovation project, the closeout, the closeout status report. Jeff?
Here, Rich, hold on one second.
Oh wait, I'm sorry. Is somebody else leaving?
Jack, leave your room open so we can use it.
Please, please.
Thank you, go ahead, Jeff.
Evening, folks. Congratulations to our new president and secretary. Facilities-related update, I've just got a few quick things to let you know about our security grant. We have had two or three security grants in town over the last couple of years. The last one that we have, or at least the present one that we have, is the third round from the Homeland Security. We have reworked that security grant because our needs have changed since we made the application about two and a half years ago. In working with Craig Samansky, John, our new security director, Doug Solak, and Kevin Delaney, the finance director, we've put together a new array of things that will, we think this money will be used very well for. Cameras, communications, access, card readers, window film, police responders, et cetera. Very important to us, we have still, let's see, approximately $400,000 to spend, which we will spend between now and the end of this June. So the things that we've chosen to spend that money on are important, it can be done in a relatively quick period of time. Most of it is already underway, not necessarily in construction, but in planning and in approvals. I met with the director of, one of the directors of the security program for the state this past week, went over our plans with him. They were very, very receptive, and we're hoping to get our approval to move forward as quickly as possible. And Kevin Delaney has been very helpful with us in the finance department. So that's what will be done by the end of June, and that'll, hopefully will be in line to get some more security grants as they may come forward from the state. Three other things, the blast room is moving forward very well. We did seem to have enough money to move forward with the furniture. I know that the staff is working forward with Doug to see if we can get that stuff designed and put in within a reasonable time period, but we're pleased to say that we're going to have enough money to do it well. The third thing is, is McGee Gym is planning on having the painting that we planned on doing, it's going to be done over Christmas, that schedule is in place, and I think that we'll be able to be done during that period of time. And also the gym floor at Willard. So that is all the facility-related updates I have, unless there's some questions.
I think Adam has a question for you.
Willard. No, no, the, the other, the only one that didn't get done last year was Willard. We're all set, Willard was the only one that we couldn't get in during the summer season.
Were you going to address the closeout?
Pardon me?
Were you going to address the, the high school closeout?
Yes, yes, if you're ready, yes.
Yeah, it's all set, thank you.
I know we've all been very interested in finding out what's going to happen to the Berlin High School project. Just a little update for some of you that may or may not know, remember it's an eight, three million dollar project. It's about 47 million of that is paid for by local funds, bonding, and the rest by the state of Connecticut. There's a whole process that has to be gone through to not finish this type of project, get it done, but also to close it out financially. I had the pleasure of meeting with, it was the first really good meeting, as far as I'm concerned, that I've been at anyways, that had to do with the closeout of Berlin High School, and that was with Kevin Delaney, the finance director, and that was with Tom Smith, who is the program manager of Gilbane Company. Gilbane Company was a company that was hired by the county to be the kind of program manager of the entire process, along with the construction manager, architects, engineers, et cetera. The good news is, is that it seems that all the issues that were unsettled for at least a number of months now, so we couldn't talk about closeout, are settled. Lawsuits, et cetera. And it also seems that, at least looking at the numbers, and none of these numbers are exact. There's going to be a lot of other things that get discussed, contingencies, contingencies, the owner's contingency, what gets that, what that gets used for, the owners of the town, by the way. And the contingency for the construction manager, FIP, what their contingencies could be used for, et cetera, et cetera. So there's still some settlement to go on among the players, but it looks that there should be, I can't give you the exact number, I can give you, I can give you some reasonable ranges, and I don't want anybody to hold anybody to this, but it seems like there should be excess for the million dollars.
It's not over budget? Can you say that loudly into the microphone, not everybody in the world can hear this?
What happens when, in closeout of any project, what happens is, is that the school building committee, which is our public building commission, has to close it out financially in a lot of forms, the state of Connecticut, and show what money is left. What happens when that money is left, is then that there's worse determinations coming in. We've talked about before, the first determinations, a lot of time are made at the public, at the building, school building committee level. At this point, I probably haven't heard anything more descriptive than what we have heard over the last few months, is that the public building commission seems to be, and have not seen any resolution, but seems to be comfortable with the fact that they have completed the project as it was supposed to be completed, and they're ready, willing, and able to return the rest of the money to the town to deliver it as they want. That's the interesting part here, because there's a few things that have to happen for us to close out correctly. Number one is, you don't have to close out the entire project and accept the project and do anything with anyone that is left over. The Board of Ed has to accept it, so that's a signature of the superintendent, I don't think it's reform, and usually that signature doesn't happen until the board makes an action, have that happen, and accept the project. So you still, you get to play now, you get to play at a very, very high level. I think my recommendation is, and I can go over more things on the figures and so on and so forth, but I can go through this meeting. The recommendation would be is that, what I've heard is that the public building commission is looking to see what the town council is interested in doing with any money that may be left over, whether it's $5 or whether it's $10,000, and what they should do, do with it. That's not necessarily, in my mind, a normal method, but of course, if that's what it's going to be here in Berlin, that's fine. It seems to me, the recommendation should be for the Board of Ed to ask, to meet with or get on the agenda of the town council and start talking about what the Board of Ed would like to do with any excess money if there is any. So you get into, you go and have something happen so quickly now that it's taken so long to get there, that you don't get quite enough time. So that's my recommendation. I can talk more about the project if you'd like, or my guess is, that's the part you want to hear.
I have a couple of questions, Jeff. The first one is, we've had multiple conversations about the duct work, it being sealed, being not sealed. It's been addressed, it hasn't been addressed. As I sit here now, I have no idea whether the issue that we had relative to the duct work has been addressed, has been rewrapped, has been weatherized, whatever the proper words are, because I keep hearing, depending on who you talk to, you get different direction.
The best information I have is that, other than the duct work being painted, with some kind of paint sealer that had been done after the initial construction was put in place, nothing has been done with it other than that, and that, from, I've not seen an engineering report, but that from people that are very knowledgeable of the project itself and of that duct work and why it was put in that way, and how it's functioning, they don't believe that that's a finished product for the safety. Finished product for that duct work, there is a concern that it is going to leak, continue to leak, and not be able to hold up against the weather for a longer period of time. So, that's what it is right now. I will also tell you that the cost, I haven't seen the actual estimates, but I've heard a kind of conversation, the cost rewrap the duct work, which has to be, well, wrap the duct in a, in a, in a very, in a, in a, in a manner that has been designed already and cost estimated out as professionals say is the best thing they can, we can do with this duct work at the moment, and it should fix everything for many, many, many years. So we're not talking about just a band-aid. I've heard that it's estimated at about $1.3 million.
Okay. Anybody want to?
Without, 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 uh, at least the state regulations, there are other things we could probably do, I think it's a little early to talk about it at the legislative level with these kind of issues, that happen all the time, but at this point, I would just say it's not eligible for the match. It would all be common.
As a follow-up to that, so, you know, I know that there were, and I understand, just from what I've heard, the duct work issue, everything was done to spec. It's not that anything was done incorrectly, not that anything was installed improperly, it was done to spec, that was, well, spec'd out, but, uh, and that's why, uh, the state feels that way. I understand that. But if we're looking at a, at a closeout, and, you know, with regard to duct work, leaks, uh, what have you, I mean, it was a major renovation of an old building, you're, you're not going to fix everything in, at one time, I, I, I understand that. But is the PBC going to look at all the closeout punch list items, all the closeout items? I mean, are they saying that contingencies are in place, say it's the million dollars, and I'm assuming that's construction and owner's contingency combined? Approximately, okay. So if that's...
All contingencies, no.
So if, if that's, if that's the case, are they considering, is the PBC considering that the punch list items are even complete?
I don't know that, I don't know.
Because all, my, my only comment would be, is if anything was going to be done legislatively, potentially, the session next year is, you know, February to the beginning of May, um, and we have one shot at it, to say. Um, I would just suggest that the PBC, in conjunction with yourself, Jeff, you know, possibly put together a list of duct work leaks, wha, whatever it is, and let's just take a look at everything at one time. Because I would hate to, to, to look at closing something out and say, oh, by the way, we closed that, but we also have this one issue over here, or we want to look at that. I mean, it would be, it would be helpful if we could take a look at everything on one list.
I think this late in the game of this project, it would be that this level is exactly what you want to do.
And, and you're right, Tom Smith is excellent, by the way.
Yeah, I think what you'd like to do is get the list from all the people that have done the tours, but also from Doug Solow, what the project needs, and there is always punch list, there's always things going on that can be done, what's the cost of that, putting that together with getting the duct work in place, and then figuring out from a standpoint of, uh, A to B, the C, maybe there's a C, that says, what's the best way for the town, in total, with the board of ed, with the board of finance, with the town council, to approach the state of Connecticut and go, here's what we'd like to do, this is why, and can you look at your regulations as a whole and move this thing forward?
And, and you're saying that they wouldn't give us the forty percent reimbursement on the duct work. My understanding is that in order for them to certify, renovate, it's new, it's got to last for at least twenty years.
Yep.
So if the duct work is not wrapped, is, are the units going to last more, are they going to last twenty years? Like, that's, I'm just, I'm, I'm, that's my argument. My argument to the state would be, if we need to certify this as for at least twenty years, we have to wrap the duct work.
Well, the thing is...
Sounds like it's more a Gilbane builder's issue, to go after them, because then they have given us something that isn't going to last long. The state's going to say that's our job to do.
But it was, it was in specs, and it was signed off by, by the town, by, uh, the construction people, by the state, everyone signed off on it, and it's...
Very difficult for these things to go after, everybody that you'd like to go after to see if it was a great design, if it should improve, if so and so forth. I mean, I think the building, uh, the public building commission listened to the professionals that they had for them and did what they were supposed to do. I mean, there's not, it doesn't make any sense to go with, did we do it right, did we not? But the regulations in state of Connecticut are very, very important in this case. When you go to people like Constantine out there, who, who, here's a reg, I can't do anything, love to help you, but I can't provide you by, well, he can't do anything about you, this is one of the directors of, of the, uh, school construction, state, and there along the way, smart guy, very strong, and what he wants is spent state money on, what he should spend state money on. The letter of the law looks like, in this situation, I had a long conversation with Tom Smith about this, I was not too pleased to answer, but, but, he goes, Jeff, the way I read it all the way, here we get firsthand, is that this, the Department of Administrative Services, School Construction Division, is going to say, no, this is not eligible. Now, that's, that's okay at the moment on the first blush, because there are some other ways that we might be able to get around that with help from legislation, which happens all the time. Don't know if it happens as much as it used to, but it seems to be something we would remember about that.
Has the Public Building Commission made any kind of official or formal statement that they believe we should be closing this out?
I am not aware.
Do we have any kind of a timetable then, that we have to work within? Because it seems like we've been in the same place for a year or so.
I think that you're going to see the Public Building Commission, this is just my thought, I think you're going to see the Public Building Commission move quickly now, because they would like to close out the project and move the money somewhere. See, if it doesn't get moved, this is just, if it doesn't get moved into doing more things on Burla High, it is still already bonded by the state, by the town, and is eligible to be moved for other things, which is what we're all about. But that's just different to me. So I, I, I think it's, it's important, I don't recommend anyways, I think if you consider, um, getting involved now, this is the right time to come out and support, uh, publicly what the board of ed is going to expect and what they're going to want before they set it up. Refund the guy, I guess that's what I'm saying. Goodness, goodness. So if you were to discuss having, uh, authorized superintendent, so, you may have to speak with the mayor, speak with the town council, want to have a conversation on what's happening with the project. Recommended by you.
Any further questions for Jeff? Thank you very much. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, the next part of the new business, we had two first readings. Uh, the first one was public policy revision, uh, the, I'm sorry, new policy one-one-six-one, the armed security officers, we heard a little bit about that earlier, pursuant to the board supporting the hiring of armed security guards for our schools, a new policy's been developed and proposed for adoption regarding officers providing support to the administration and staff and maintaining a safe school environment, as well as carrying of firearms on school grounds and the performance of duty. So we've had a first reading, we're not going to take any action on that tonight, but if you haven't taken a good, close reading on it, please do, it's a very important issue, and we're setting the parameters for how these people are going to be used in our, in our buildings. The other first policy was about the time, place, and notice of the meetings, perhaps a little less controversial, revised policy nine-oh-eight-five, and the same thing, policy needs to be revised to reflect the change in time that the board of ed meetings will begin. So those are all the first readings. So it's the second reading now. We had a second reading, and we're up for adoption, for new policy zero-one-zero-zero, the Board of Education mission statement, purpose, and then also revised policy nine-oh-oh-one, the committees. Um, it's the work we did in our workshops, essentially, so it's good to see that we're finally getting to this point, where we're making things official, and that's going to be one of the next big chunks to do. Other than replacing Jake on the board, it'll be to repurpose and reconfigure our committees to do the work that we want them to do. Yeah, go ahead, do you have a question?
Before we make a motion to adopt this policy, I'm just wondering, is, is there a time constraint? Do we have to do it tonight?
Why wouldn't we? What, do you have other questions or concerns?
I do, yeah, I have concerns. So my two concerns are, now that we've taken some time away from it, as I reread it, I just, I think we can do a better job with it. I think it's really wordy, um, and I know we've spent a lot of work on it, but I, I just think that as a board of education, we can do a better job and come to, I know there was a lot of discussion, and we all kind of got to a point where we're like, okay, let's just leave it be for now. Um, and I also think with having a new board member, we should include them in the process, and if that's going to be in the near future, we could bring this back to workshop and just take a little more time around it, instead of rushing in and adopting it. For me personally, um, I just, I don't really like how it reads with broad opportunities and freedom.
You're talking about the mission statement?
Mm-hmm.
Well, does anybody, now, the...
That's just me, um, I know we've done a lot of work on it, and I think something like this takes a lot of time and a lot of work to really craft and perfect, so that's where I stand with this tonight. I don't know if anyone else...
Well, I guess technically, we probably should have had a motion and then a discussion on that motion. Tim, would that be correct?
I, uh, would agree with that.
Okay, so let's do that, and then we can discuss, and then discuss Julia's concerns at that point. So do we have a motion?
I need the board to adopt new policy zero-one-zero-zero, BOE mission statement and purpose, and revised policy nine-zero-zero-one committees as presented.
So Julia made some points that are worth considering, does anybody else have a comment?
I second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Matt, second. So further conversation then.
I have to say, I kind of agree with Julia, and I kind of, uh, thought about it at the meeting that we had in workshop, too. It does seem extremely wordy, and, um, with broad opportunities and freedom, I just feel like there's something else we could do. Um, that's just my opinion, if this is going to be who we are, I think that it needs to be simplified, but yet, I don't know, I just, it's just kind of a little awkward, but I think.
And to Tracy's point, if this is going to be who we are, then I think we should also be inclusive of the new person that's coming on board, and we should continue this work together. It's ta, the four years I've sat on the board, this is the first time we've even considered revising something like this, so what would another one to two months be to really just perfect it and craft it?
Well, I'd like to address the new board member piece of it. I actually don't think we need to wait for the new board member. Um, I think we're always going to have new people coming in and out, and if by the time we get to another workshop, it's not until the middle of January, I believe, is the, or the end of January will be the next workshop, and by that point, we're deep into the budget process as well. So in terms of waiting just for the new person, my personal opinion is, we don't need to wait. That doesn't mean that you may be wrong, you may not be wrong about your concerns about it as is, and we can decide when we vote on this, but I don't know how anybody else feels.
I think we've had these discussions going all the way back to the first workshop of the work of the board is constantly in flux and needing to be addressed, and the turnover of the board is something that the current board does, shouldn't be hindered by, because the current board versus the future board versus the past board is, is always going to be something that changes. So the board that was in place at the time that these documents were written was intended to be the, uh, the shepherd of the board, and this is what we came forward. I mean, who's to say that the person that we appoint, I guess...
Tim, I agree with you on that point, but, but then going back to my original point, I just think it's really wordy, and I think readability, we could just do a better job with it.
I know I have an opinion, but I really would rather hear from other people, if other people have opinions on this first, and then I'd be happy to share mine afterwards. So I...
I like it. I think we worked on it for a year, and I agree. I'm very excited, I like that we've come up with it, we've worked on it for a long time, so I think we need to do further work.
I think that we've spent a lot of time on this. It was the focus of two complete meetings, if you will, and I think that with any, anything that gets developed over time, someone is going to want to make some type of a change, and I think at some point, we have to make the decision, adopt what needs to be adopted, and move on, and then if, in the future, the work of the board changes, then at that point, it should be addressed. Uh, if, if we're talking about it's wordy, or it doesn't hit the word that you want it to say, I mean, if you think about it, is, we spent hours in the first meeting with, what was her name?
Michelle.
Allison Zamuna, and then we then spent multiple hours again changing what we did the first time, which my fear is that we will push this off, we'll have another meeting, we'll spend hours to change two or three words, and then go to vote on it, and then someone else is going to say, I don't like that, and we're going to then change, and this will just be perpetually going on.
So my thought is that we should, I, I'm not disagreeing that, um, it might be a bit wordy and could be, um, potentially refined, but, um, I agree with Matt in saying that I think we ought to consider it in terms of the spirit of the mission statement, as opposed to sort of the letter or word, um, and move forward in terms of our interpretation and how we, um, how we act on that, I guess, is what I would say.
I would actually agree. I, I don't know that we're ever going to create a sentence or two sentences that's going to be perfect, and while it may be wordy, and a word or two might want to be changed, I was rather surprised that we sat down for an hour the other day at the last workshop and rehashed it all over again, because I thought we had completed this, and I guess I'm happier now with what it was than what it was then, but on the other hand, we're always going to be sitting here making changes and proposing changes, and then we never get started on the work that's supposed to flow from the changes. We get caught up with the words themselves. Um, that's not to say that the words couldn't be phrased better, but I think at some point we have to say, this is good, we're digging our feet in, and we're getting into the work now that needs to get done, and I don't want the words to hold us up. That's my feeling. Anybody else want to make a statement or question or comment? All right, then I think we should vote on this. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
I was supposed to say nay.
Nay.
It's six to two. So the motion passes six to two. Um, we are now down into D, I believe, the authorization to apply and sign for credit cards through the CTDAS P card program. Uh, the credit card program is co-sponsored by the Department of Administrative Services. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize superintendents' schools to apply, apply and sign for credit cards through the Connecticut DAS P card program.
I'll second.
Moved by Adam, seconded by Tim. Any questions, conversations?
I've got a question.
Sure.
So, uh, Brian, who, who's going, who's going to utilize, how many P cards are there going to be? How's that going to work? Because it hurt for guests, they got into this trouble a couple of years ago, and they stripped everybody of their P cards.
So currently, there's, um, there's, probably five. The problem is, at the building level, the principal will have one, only one at the building. Problem is, there's a lot of orders that are done online, that don't take POs, so it's causing an issue with getting the purchasing ability. And what happens is, we have to do reimbursements, which causes even more work on the end. We're getting the statements, we're gonna, there's still going to be paperwork to check, but you don't have to fill out the reimbursement forms, and then you're reimbursing individuals, which we'd rather have be on our accounts, so we get the statement, we have more control. Um, so there will definitely be oversight, and we've spoken to Jeff, as well as Wendy, who is, uh, purchasing, uh, at the board, and how we'll have oversight on it. So we look for one for each, uh, minute, one for each school, really, and then the, you know, cabinet members at the board.
What is the, what is the, uh, limit on each of the cards? I believe it's a, is there still a total limit, Jeff? Is it, Jeff can explain why. Currently, what's happening with our current system, let me just explain why we're switching. We're with the chief, the credit union, and we're going to try to get additional cards. They have us under one credit line for all of our cards, so when certain things are purchased, we're actually maxing out our limit, um, because we're purchasing, you know, items online or what have you. So in a month, we actually max out, and we can't use the credit card. So we tried to go back to achieve, to get additional, cumbersome, and Jeff recommended P cards, as that's what most school districts are using, and Jeff can explain more why it's a better model, so, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I heard something about limits.
Why does the P, why is the P card, P card a better model than the current one?
Well, it, it's just, it's simply a credit card. It doesn't do anything more than that.
We use them, my center, so I understand.
But what it does from a public agency standpoint, as far as I'm concerned, which is why, in comparing it with what the normal banks had, things they were doing, and when I heard the presentation on the P card, this is something that has, you know, been supported heavily by the state of Connecticut and Department of Administrative Services, they put certain things into the program which make it very, very nice for us. First of all, um, the reports that come out are easily auditable, fire audit orders, they already know about it, they know about what, what, um, uh, JP Morgan, Genesis is doing with the reporting, it's the things you can break up from a public agency and evaluate whether who's spending what, at what level. Also, there's rebates. Interesting enough, if you think about how banks do credit cards, they can give rebates of things on credit cards, depending, levels, a different level, depending on how much you spend. We get put into the entire group of municipalities and board of ed's that, that spend and use this credit card mistake was just a number, and so our percentage of the rebate is much richer than you could ever get. That money comes right back into the board of ed to be spent again. So there's a lot of reasons that it made sense, and plus, very frankly, Adam's question about credit cards, there's always the factor of should the public officials have, should they have, what, what's the limit's going to be, things like that. This is, I've tested pretty well by these other agencies and so on and so forth, and what we're trying to do is get credibility by doing it in this state program.
I have no problem with the buildings administrator's having us more, wouldn't be elected officials having, so if one's the board of ed and the council doesn't have P cards, we're fine.
You know, you know, very, very frankly, they, the people at the P car administration, and if the EAS people were, they don't push it out, but, but, these are, these are employees that get this kind of stuff, that could lose their job if they do what they want.
Are there any other questions about that? All right, so we've had a motion, it's been seconded. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's eight, nothing. Before we go into executive session, let me just say, I meant to say this a minute ago, the three committees that we've now formally changed over need members, or they're not, don't have much good, not much of a purpose to the committees without members to them. So if you could please reach out to me and tell me which of the three committees you would like to be a part of as your number one preference, and I'll do my best to give everybody the committee that they would like, and, uh, at the next meeting, we can announce what the membership committees are going to be and who the chairs of those committees are going to be. So please try to reach out to me within the next few days, and let me know what your preference is, everybody. I believe we have an, uh, executive session?
Do we need any special?
Yes?
No, it'd just be the board and myself.
Moved to enter into executive session to discuss a personnel matter, inviting the superintendent.
Second.
Been moved and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Kerry's...
Executive session.
All right, executive session.